And it is clear that the outputs of that congestion charging will affect the poorest, those who live out of Cambridge City, much more than those who can afford to live in there. So it's great tool that you're handing us here because it's really going to play into our hands. But not only that, I wonder just how difficult the officers under this administration will find it as they get skewered on the point that is actually passed as a motion today to try and deliver some kind of rationale for going ahead with congestion charging, when you have to consider the whole of the county, not the Greater Cambridge area, the whole of the county through this socio-economic lens of place. And you will struggle with that, but it'll be nice to see those convolutions. It'll also perhaps change the thinking of some of the existing committee chairs. When the holiday access fund was brought forward previously, I pointed out, I sat at a committee and I said, "Is rural areas, rural, rural, living in a rural place?" Thank you. "Living in a rural place." It's much, it's great to be able to have a holiday activity, but if you can't get from A to B, you can't access this. Now, this was borne out when the first set of figures came in, those able to access it in Cambridge City South County was 50% higher than those able to access it in Fendland, 50% higher. And yet, when I sought the help of the Chair of the Committee, councillor Tom Sanderson, the response I got was, "Go out and find these holiday accessibility funds yourself that they can help with." And that was backed up by councillor Lorna De Pray. Thankfully, thankfully, when I spoke to officers, we've now got something that actually makes sense, because that's what a county council can do as opposed to individual. And it'd be great to move forward with examples like this, when you yourselves are passing a motion that a lot more than it will help your normal Cambridge-centric ideals.
Councillor Doughton.
Thank you. Earlier speakers speak about children, corporate parenting and access to schools. And we acknowledge that education is a very important socio-economic determinant. Education doesn't stop when people leave school. It's a lifelong activity. And I hope that we will be committed to lifelong learning and to the equality that that brings, good education and good access to lifelong learning.
Councillor Bird.
Thank you, Chair. That are disabled. At the moment, I don't know if anybody knows, that disabled people can claim £140 towards their heat a year, or their electricity. But the Conservative government want to stop that, so 200 will have to have electricity for specialist equipment, even to live, to breathe. And the Conservative government are going to do this at this time? I think it is absolutely disgusting. And we will lose people through it. Disabled people need heat to keep warm for their legs, otherwise it causes more problems for them. The whole county is deprived, not just the city or Fendland, it's the whole area. In the north of Cambridge, we have three wards that are deprived, very deprived. Then you've got Abbey, very deprived. And even in Trumpington, it's a deprived area. So it's all over the county, so we must take that into account. And I would hope that one day, I remember working with Philippi in the 90s, over disability, and we did great things. But I would hope that one day, we won't be saying, "That person's disabled." We're all the same, we'll just use different ways of getting about. And we shouldn't have to be discussing the Equalities Act now. I'm really sad about that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. We've had a really full debate on this. My last speaker is councillor Goldsack, and then we're going to move to councillor Sanderson as seconded. So councillor Goldsack.
Well, I will keep it brief. And for those that play full council bingo, I hadn't actually expected to speak on this matter, so you can tick that one off. Thank you. What I was going to say was, you've heard, I think, pretty much unilateral support for this, for this motion. There's a great saying that I learnt very many years ago and I live by almost daily, and that is that most people don't remember what you say, but they remember how you made them feel. And I would urge you all, I mean, I congratulate you councillor Cox-Condrin on bringing this motion forward, but read sections A, B, C and D, and speak to somebody from a most deprived area in the Fendlands or in Abbey Ward, as we've just heard, et cetera, et cetera, and see if they really understand what you're asking here. Get this turned around and get this into plain speaking English, or whatever their national language is, that they can, so they can understand exactly what it is we're trying to do here, right? Otherwise, wholly support this, that's all I had to say.
Thank you councillor Sanderson, as seconded with the motion.
Thank you, Chair. It gives me a great pleasure to second councillor Cox-Condrin's motion. Congratulate her on putting this forward. She, along with other members of the so-called Cosmic Committee, have done a great deal of work in this area. I know that councillor Cox-Condrin works extremely hard, not during, not only as a councillor, but also during her day job. She's been extremely active with the Food Poverty Alliance, for example, as has councillor Thompson. I know councillor Criswell as well has also done a lot, and I wish him a speedy recovery. Hope we'll see him back here very soon. I don't really see this as a competition between which parts of the county are the most deprived. I think we seem to be sort of getting to that point. I think we all accept that there are areas, all parts of the county have their difficulties. We're sitting in, near, sorry, St Hives today, my apologies, St Hives today. A relatively prosperous town, but that does have its challenges as well. My own town does also. So I very much see this as a holistic approach to dealing with this matter. And quite a few colleagues have said that they just, that they don't want to hear words, they want to hear, want to see progress. Well, we're already doing that on our committee. I mentioned the Household Support Fund, for example. Lot of help from our district and city council colleagues, who've been very good at rolling out the project. We have a million pounds in the budget to try and continue that good work. As I think councillor Howitt said, this is about more accessible services. It's about the impact that what we deliver has on those who are most vulnerable in our community. And I think that we will move quite quickly in addressing a lot of these issues through the work we do. Somebody mentioned the issue of data sharing, I think it was perhaps councillor Cox-Condrin. And she's absolutely right, we need, need to do more work between the various authorities in, in that area. That will make, I think, life a lot easier for a good number of people. So, as I said, Chair, it gives me great pleasure to second the motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Sanderson. Councillor Cox-Condrin.
Thank you so much. In November, the UN Special Rapporteur on Extreme Poverty and Human Rights, Philip Alston, stated that "The experience of the United Kingdom, especially since 2010, underscores the conclusion that poverty is a political choice. Ending poverty must be a human rights priority and rising inequalities are a missed opportunity to end poverty." Thank you so much to everybody who has put forward in this discussion. I welcome and echo enthusiastic expectations to redress inequality across the county, absolutely. And I think that any questions around why this motion needs to be implemented, when it is what we as interventional councillors absolutely stand for, I think that maybe that underestimates the role of the Equality Impact Assessment in how policies are delivered and shaped. Inequality, as we heard, is, works on multi-levels. It harms physical and mental health, self-esteem, happiness, sense of trust and civic participation. Unequal societies have less social mobility and higher crime rates. The legislated equality strands women, members of minority ethnic, disabled and LGBTQ communities are all more likely to experience issues of poverty, low-paying jobs, poor physical and mental health issues and long-term chronic stress. Disabled people, older people, LGBTQ and minority ethnic people, particularly refugees, are more likely to experience isolation and loneliness. Benefit changes, including the benefit freeze and cap and benefit sanctions, have disproportionately affected people already at risk of harm, discrimination and disadvantage, as does the impact of climate change, extreme weather, food shortages and cost of living increases and pollution. These multiple layers of oppression and discrimination make it even harder to navigate the social systems necessary to find support, impacting further on economic inequality, marginalisation and chronic stress levels, which then reduce even further the quality of life and create even more risks. Equality should not be a postcode lottery. So as well as working closely with Tom Faruys and our community development officers, I have been working with a number of equality, diversity and inclusion experts to really explore and develop this motion, including our own EDI officers, who have incredible knowledge, vision and passion for the socio-economic duty. And Sophie Beric of the Equality Trust, who stated that "If it is implemented well, this duty will help to provide a safety measure for any of Cambridge County Council's future policy development, so that it does not disproportionately disadvantage people who are at the sharp end of social, economic inequality." If it is implemented well. And this is where we talk about action, not words. Thank you Faruys for sharing more information about Cambridge Insights, the tools already existing within the council, and the work that you've been doing to nurture the cross committee and partnership working to develop and examine this data and how we can share it. That is a really vital element. On top of that, our EDI leadership forum directorates representatives are already in place. In February, we launched our council EDI contacts, there are 27 already trained and five more volunteers have signed up to train. They will signpost staff to resources and speak up about EDI issues they spot with their team's work arrangements. The draft of the Equality Impact Assessment e-form guidance is ready for consultation with staff, including the EDI working group, and it will then be signed off by the EDI leadership forum. Learning and development have just appointed a consultant to support with EDI learning, and there's a whole programme to be planned. And Impact and Equality Impact Assessment super users are being recruited. So these are people in each directorate who will have enhanced training and support from the EDI team, so that they can help their colleagues with the Equality Assess, Impact Assessment process. As joint administration members, we have equality and anti-poverty at the very heart of our manifesto. I believe that we all have equality and anti-poverty at the heart of how we deliver and develop our work. If, if this motion goes through, I'll be calling for a cross-party workshop led by the Equality and Diversity Equality Team on how to deliver. Oh, one more thing, I have absolute faith, so I have absolute faith that if adopted, this council could implement the duty very well indeed. Equality defines a fair society, so I urge you to please support this motion for Cambridge County Council to adopt the socio-economic duty as a powerful lever to reduce the damaging gaps that harm so many of our residents that live in rural isolation, poverty and deprivation, and that harms every one of us. Thank you. Did I just get in? Yes.
Phew, we're doing so well with that. Okay, so let's move to the vote then on councillor Cox-Condrin's motion. All those in favour, please raise your hand. I think that's unanimously supported, so well done. Thank you very much. Now we move on to the fourth motion, which was submitted by councillor Ed Murphy. Can I ask councillor Murphy to move and speak to her motion as set out on pages seven and eight of the council agenda?
Thank you very much, Chair. I should say at the beginning, I'm not a tree specialist, but some of the residents I represent are. I first became alerted to the fact that there might be a problem with the trees planted as part of the A14 project, when residents wrote to me expressing great concern at the sheer number of saplings that were failing to thrive. "Just dead saplings and weeds in the plastic tubes," wrote one. Another wrote, "The way they are planted means they will never thrive." Since receiving these concerning reports and going to inspect various points where many trees were planted together, I've been trying to obtain information about the original contract to plant the trees, also the state of the trees and the support environment for them. It was therefore interesting to read the briefing, which provides some of that information. For example, we now know that there were just over 40,000 trees planted initially, although we do not know the date when they were first planted, and that also in 2020, 94% of them were dead. It's important to know when the saplings were initially planted, because the five-year obligation on national highways to replant trees starts from that point. We are told that during 2021, national highways attempted to address this by replanting the new saplings. But how many were replanted? Was it the whole 94%? And if not, why not? They have an obligation to replant during the next available planting season, so they've had an opportunity to replant, but there is no sign of it. The reasons for the tree planting failure are given as poor quality maintenance by the national highways contractor, as well as problems with ground conditions. The contractor's quality may be something that could be addressed through the contract, depending on the terms. But what of the ground conditions? It is possible that the whole tree planting project might be doomed. We may now know some of the problems with the tree planting, but we obviously don't know yet what the solutions are and what we need to do to ensure that the trees thrive. It's vital that we learn from this exercise, or else we will simply repeat the same errors over and over, and the vast majority of the 40,000 trees planted will die. We need to think how to make the trees thrive, not just look at national highways' contract compliance. The briefing is helpful, but information about this important contract does seem to be a little thin on the ground. We need to have more information, and that is part of what the motion sets out to do. We're asking for more and better information to be published about this tree planting project, so that it is available not just for officers or even for a committee, but also for the public. Having the EGI committee consider the contribution of trees to decarbonisation and reducing pollution is a very positive step, and the motion tries to ensure that we join up projects that have an environmental impact. We know that the county's highway team, highways team, is keen to engage with national highways in a proactive way, and they are dealing with many legacy issues from the A14 project already. For example, in my own division, the derelict buildings that remain in Bar Hill. And we know that the environment team and others are keen to have the best support for trees as part of delivering our biodiversity and decarbonisation goals. So any learnings from the failed tree management in the A14 project will be really very important for the future tree planting projects and projects like the A428. We really do need to get this right. The joint administration wants to send a message loud and clear that we care about trees, and when we engage in major tree planting programmes, we will work to ensure that the trees thrive, so that they can benefit future generations. I would ask members, please, to support this motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second for that motion? Councillor Shayla, thank you. Do you reserve your right to speak?
Can I reserve my right to speak at the end, Chair? Thank you very much.
So I think we've also got an amendment on this one from councillor Count. So councillor Count, would you like to move your amendment?
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to start off with one of the difficulties we're experiencing with moving amendments at this current point in time, due to another constitutional change from the joint administration. We actually have to move our amendments before we receive briefing notes from officers, which are politically neutral, that help us in our stance. We mentioned earlier on about the way that our democratic right is being eroded, and that is one of them. And I mention that in this particular case, because one of the things that councillor Murphy has stated, is actually picked up on the briefing note, would have affected the amendment, which is that the completion date, the end of the five years, is not based on when the trees are planted. It's based on the completion certificates issued for each section of the road, not from once they were first planted. So depending on which part of the road there is, it has a different completion certificate issued, and that means there are different dates all the way along. And therefore, I would have added to the amendment, had I known that at that point in time, that we don't issue any more completion certificates until a proper management regime is established and in place. But like I said, that's just one of the difficulties we have to face with all these changes to the constitution that deprive, that is labelled. I have to say, there's much to, to agree with councillor Murphy's original motion. The trees were planted for a reason. Just because they are dying, the reasons have not gone away. If anything, whilst they've been dying in their droves, the need for them to thrive has actually increased. And all of that is captured in the original motion. And lastly, to ensure that the correct monitoring of the contract is in the right place, going to the right committee. I do hope, like the last motion, that everyone understands we are all singing from the same hymn sheet. It's just a matter of how we get there. And in this case, namely, these trees have a vital purpose. Agreed. These trees must thrive to achieve that. Agreed. National highways is responsible for achieving that. I hope you agree. And the county council has a role in ensuring national highways delivers on its commitments. I hope you agree. I therefore hope you can support this amendment in the way, the helpful way it was intended.
Thank you. Do we have a second for that amendment? I can't read that far. Councillor Doug to you. My eyesight is failing me.
No, that's all right. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to second the amendment and reserve my right to speak. Thank you.
Councillor Murphy, are you prepared to accept this amendment?
No, I'm not prepared to accept it.
Okay, so we're going to move into the debate on the amendment then. Would anybody like to speak? There are no hands. Councillor Dew.
Yeah, as no one else has said they will, I'll step forward presumably to second the amendment. As councillor Count has said, we're fully behind this set of proposals. It is no doubt the fact that highways authority are responsible fully for putting the trees in, the welfare of them, looking after them, et cetera. What we've got to try and avoid doing, in my opinion, is overburdening ourselves and our highways department with looking after these, which is, you know, a fear that could happen. We have to bear in mind at the moment, those of us who sit on the highways committee, our council is already extremely short of a very large number of highways authority, even the local highways officers. I think there's 68 was the number we were told at the last meeting, that are missing at the moment. I don't want to overburden our officers with this additional work, but I do want to see Highways England held fully to account for what they should be doing. And I don't think any of us would argue that. I think councillor Murphy is absolutely right. Their trees were there for a purpose, they need to survive, they need to be looked after. But the duty of us is to, us as a council, is to ensure that those whose duty is to do that, do it, not that we step in and do it instead. So as I say, I don't think the amendment's meant as anything other than a thing to, because I, you know, fear that otherwise we could be burdened, and with a department that's already, you know, suffering, it won't help. And I will leave it there. Thank you very much, Chair.
Councillor Murphy, would you like to sum up before we vote on the amendment?
Thank you. The reasons I oppose the amendments are, the amendments to this motion, are that the overall effect, although doubtless intended to be clarifying, et cetera, to my mind, the overall effect of them is to water down the ambitions and options available to deal with a tree. Can national highways do what they are contracted to do, although that would be a good place to start. We need to focus on getting proper information published, not just having a behind closed doors agreement.
The amendment, please raise your hands. Any abstentions, please?
Chair, the result of the vote is 23 votes in favour, 32 votes against, no abstentions. The amendment is therefore lost.
So now we move into debate on the original motion proposed by councillor Murphy. Would anybody like to speak in the debate? Councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Chair. As councillor Murphy rightly points out in her motion, the question is where we are currently on the five-year guarantee from national highways for the A14 trees that have been planted. The A14 near Bar Hill, Long Stanton, Oakington, was completed in 2020 during lockdown, two years ago. And we are now on, on our road to three more years on the guarantee, and yet we are still questioning what is happening to our trees. The overall planting of these trees are so dense in some areas and planted so very close together, how can they survive or acquire water when they are so tightly packed? There's also, the team on the ground also inform us that maintenance issues will become a burden later on, as the trees grow. No surprise that most of the trees have tragically died. All you see, the green plastic stump with a weed and not much else. Disappointed that such a failure rate of planting has occurred and rescheduled. Can this be done with more mature trees versus younger trees, as their failure rate have been so high? If mature trees were originally considered in the high-rated noise pollution areas such as near Bar Hill and Hisden High. My division reports more road noise from A14 noticeably higher now than it has been ever before. Flooding points have emerged around and Fens Stanton. I hope that we can all support this motion to ensure that we gather learnings for our future roads infrastructure and save our trees. Thank you.
Councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. I welcome this motion. As, as we've read the concerns that many of these trees are dying, this has had a negative impact for Long Stanton and Gertan residents, and the outcome of this motion will have a positive impact on our climate. The motion will enable us to monitor the establishment of wide areas of tree saplings, which will go some way to mitigate the extra vehicles which are using the new roads. As many of you know, national highways are upgrading the A428 route between Black Cat Roundabout and Caxton-Jibbit Roundabout. This is a 10-mile dual carriageway. They are awaiting the outcome of the development consent order, which is under scrutiny by the examining authority. This project will also bring about many saplings being planted. I would like to see national highways use bi-degradable, plastic-free tree protection on the new plants, not the current plastic ones. I agree that, excuse me, as a council, we need to be proactive in dealing with national highways to give ourselves and the residents confidence that the trees are, the trees that are planted are going to survive, to create sound barriers and offset the greenhouse gases of vehicles using these new roads.
2020, which was actually surprisingly dry, those trees were watered. Now, clearly, you can't do that on a motorway embankment. Also, bear in mind that a motorway embankment is not natural ground, it is made ground. So that makes it even harder for trees to establish successfully. So I would just like us to consider in this thought process, that maybe planting new whips when you know you can't water them is not perhaps a sensible way to proceed. Years and years ago, I'll, I had a boyfriend who did some work on establishing trees in just such locations. And one of the successful methods, not the only one, but one of the successful methods was to mix a mixture of tree seeds with wallpaper paste and spray it on the ground, and let the trees establish naturally with the grass that came as well. And then the trees are growing at the speed of their own root system. So I'd just like us to take into account research that has been done on satisfactory establishment. Because of course, what we've also got all over our motorway embankments is tree tubes, which as councillor Taylor pointed out, are a carbon cost in themselves. And actually, in previous work with the Wildlife Trust, I spent some time taking tree tubes off trees, because if trees do survive, sometimes the tree tubes eventually strangle them. Yes, they're good to stop rabbit damage early on, but we do need to think about these things. So I would like us to at least take into account the research work done by the Forestry Commission caused, called "Using Natural Colonisation for the Creation of New Woodland", to actually consider what is the best way to establish trees on our made land. And if actually what we need is sound deadening, which is what councillor Murphy was wanting, then actually perhaps what we then actually perhaps what we ought to do is consider growing willow panels with acoustic, proper acoustic panels between them, living willow panels. These are available, and it was what we had hoped for at Cambridge North Station, but we ended up with something rather different. But, you know, there are methods of providing sound insulation that are actually more effective than trees. So, you know, we need to think about how we do this properly. But in the meantime, I absolutely support councillor Murphy's request for more data on this because until we know how successful these methods are, it is unwise to, you know, proceed in a way that may not succeed. And actually, what we want is attractive surroundings to our new roads. So please, can we look at the research as well? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dew.
Thank you, Chair. I'm listening to colleagues with interest here and I think whilst I fundamentally agree with the motion as it's come forward, I think we have to take into account that we're talking here about land that we do not control, that we do not have responsibility for, and we're expecting another authority to act upon. I have no problem with the fact that we should expect them to do that. And in fact, in the contracts, I think both us as a county council and several of the districts signed with highways England, one of the things we wanted from the road once it was built were the trees that they were actually asked for by a great number of the councils. However, it's not our responsibility to deliver them. It is our responsibility to hold highways England accountable and make sure they do. So I think, you know, a lot of the information I'm hearing here today about whether we need to have information on this, that or the other and other things, actually, at the end of the day, we just need to make sure they do what they're supposed to do. My biggest fear on this is, as was mentioned earlier, that there's been flooding issues in a couple of areas, including in my ward at fen Stanton. And I've been working for a year now, my predecessor, for 18 months, trying to get highways England and the Environment Agency to the table to discuss that with the parish councils, to no avail whatsoever. Our officers admit they are happily banging their head on a brick wall because neither of them wants to come to the table. We've actually involved two MPs as well and moved it no further forward. So I think it's right that we should try and hold them to account, but I'm under no illusion as to how difficult it would be to actually get them to do what we want. But I think, as I say, as the proposal stands, you know, whilst I would have liked it amended and made more forceful towards the authority that's responsible for it, I think, you know, it is as it is. Thank you.
councillor Tierney.
Thank you, chairman. First of all, I feel suitably chastised. Going forwards, I'm going to try and spend a little bit of every day thinking about tree tubes. But putting that aside, I'm unsure why this is a motion. It seems to me that it's something that could have been handled by a chat with officers and asked them to contact the appropriate authority. I don't understand why we've made a motion of this. I'm not going to vote against it. I'm going to vote for it because there's no harm in it. But I'm unsure why we've brought it to full council. That's all. Thank you.
With no other hands, oh no councillor Hathorn, sorry. I did to you before, sorry.
So I too acknowledge how difficult it is to engage with National Highways in this, that even if we do all support the motion today, it does not necessarily mean that we will get the outcomes we want. But at least it would encourage the county council to show real willing and a really strong hand in engaging with National Highways. I think it's come to council as a motion because there has been no clarity and conversations with officers have not delivered the clarity to really understand what is going on, what has been agreed and what is happening. And if there are obstacles to getting information, then clarity about those obstacles rather than silence, which I believe is what has been the problem and why the motion has come to council. For me, this is a motion as much about the relationship between National Highways, Cambridgeshire County Council and the communities we represent and serve as it is about the trees. Myself and residents across Histon, Inthington and Orchard Park witnessed hundreds of trees being felled night after night, day after day during the A14 upgrade. And it was devastating. And it's not an exaggeration to say that we grieved for the loss of those trees. And part of that sadness was because they won't be replaced easily. We know how long it takes and how important it is to get the conditions for regrowing and replacing those trees right. As the motion states, it's about asking for more than just compliance. It's about ambition, value and transparency. It's about acknowledging how important trees are for their carbon capture, their biodiversity, their ability to shield big brutal infrastructure projects, and as importantly, the love people have for trees and that their survival really matters to communities. This is about the council being prepared to stand up to National Highways and ask for better, to work with them to ensure the agreed trees thrive and to put information about this into the public realm so that the residents of Cambridgeshire know what is going on and can, for example, then write to their MPs and try to do something to make National Highways do what it's promised to do. It's also about preparing the ground for the next A428 project so that it is established that the county council will stick up for residents and will do what it can in an open and transparent way to ensure the survival of trees and get the maximum, deliver the maximum returns from National Highways in terms of trees and biodiversity.
Thank you. So let's move to councillor Shayla then, the second of the motion.
Thank you very much, Chair. I do also have a major imbatany as councillor Bradnam and I associate myself with a lot of her comments. I would like to recognise that our highways team, holding National Highways to account, perform at a best-in-class level and to the extent that other counties are beating a path to our door. And so I have no doubt that as a result of this, we will have results. To press the National Highways for their net biodiversity gain as promised. And I think what we need to do is look at what we are trying to achieve. Rewilding, changing the, really the canopy in the face of our county. And as councillor Bradnam pointed out, these parts of the county that we are planting trees on are often disturbed. They are subsoil. They're not the surface soil. So we should be looking at the kind of ecosystem that we can achieve there. The sort of progression, perhaps. There are things like stagger pollen production to support our bee communities, all these sort of things. There's a lot. There's a lot here. And I feel that to date, we're playing some sort of a numbers game. For instance, we take a tree out and replace it with two saplings. You know, remove one, replace it with two. In fact, we've removed an enormous ecosystem and replaced it with something that will take 100 years to catch up. And so a lot of this looks great on paper, 40,000 trees, you know, put in there. But what does it really mean in terms of our canopy, our forest? And so I do think we need to look at this again. So thank you very much, Chair.
councillor Murphy, would you like to sum up?
Yes, thank you very much. To sum up, thank you for the really interesting debate. And it's great that there seems to be widespread support for doing something to try to turn this situation around. We have inherited a fairly awful problem here, which clearly, if it was possible to fix, it would have happened by now. Depending on the contract terms, we may have limited options to fix this. I completely accept that. But it's really important to try. We need a can-do approach on this. Right now, tens of thousands of trees are dead and are in conditions where they are unable to thrive, even if they were replaced. And we need to do something different to change the situation, not just do the same things over and over on repeat until the National Highways contract times out. But to provide reassurance, yes, it's a big, it's a big yes to research and understanding the problems before defining the solutions. Yes to what works. I would ask please to support the motion which allows us to take a first step in the right direction. It has the possibility of better understanding the problems, providing better information about tree management generally and vital learning for other projects in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to move to the vote now on councillor Murphy's motion. All those in favour, please raise your hands now. Anybody against the motion? And any abstentions?
Chair, that's 53 votes in favour, one against and no abstentions. Motion is therefore carried.
Thank you. So now we move on to the final motion today submitted by councillor Alan Sharp. Can I ask councillor Sharp to move and speak to his motion as set out on pages, on page nine of the council agenda?
Thank you, Chair. I've brought the motion today because I feel that it is important for this council to consider the impact on all of Cambridge's residents of any imposition of charging on vehicles entering the Greater Cambridge area. I have great concerns that the principle of congestion charging will have the biggest impact on the lower-paid workers who are the unsung heroes that keep the city running. These workers clean premises, clean the streets, clean the toilets, act as hospital porters, our nurses, our waiters and waitresses, act as kitchen staff, act as barman, act as hospital porters, act as hotel reception staff and many other unsung roles. More affluent individuals will be able to pay the proposed charges with much less impact on their finances. This motion is not about political dogma but representing the people who elected us. This charge will affect not just Cambridge city residents, but residents of South Cambridgeshire, Huntingdonshire, East Cambridgeshire and Fenland who work in Cambridge but cannot afford to live in the city. I would ask those members representing those areas to consider the impact on their residents. I have great concerns over the democratic control over the changes and proposals that the GCP make. Residents of East Cambridgeshire, Huntingdonshire and Fenland have no democratic voice on any of the proposals of the GCP. Since I became a county councillor, I have been on a number of seminars or webinars with GCP officers around traffic, transport issues and been told quite pointedly when I challenge certain things that you're not part of the decision-making. I will carry on trying to represent my residents who have grave concerns even with that. The potential charge will have the effect of deterring visitors from entering the city at the very time when businesses are coming out of the financial pressures of the last two years, at the very time that they need all the footfall that they can get. I have concerns that the area in and around Cambridge has no joined-up approach to resolving the many traffic issues and has been used as a political football for far too long. I will continue to challenge and question proposals to try to get the best transport outcome for all residents. I ask that everyone considers this motion carefully and supports this motion in the best interests of all their residents. Thank you.
Do we have a second for that motion?
Chairman?
Thank you.
I'll second the motion and I'll reserve my right to speak, chairman.
Thank you. Let's move into debate then. Does anybody wish to talk on this topic? councillor Dupree?
Thank you, Chair. I cannot support this motion. The cost of owning and running a car is high. Young people, even once they have paid for lessons and passed their test, are faced not only by the cost of purchasing a car, but by the cost of insurance, which can be prohibitive, and of fuel as they are unlikely to be able to afford an electric vehicle. Lower-income families may have several low-paid jobs between them but not be able to afford to run a car each to reach them. And of course, a significant number of people will be unable to drive for reasons of ill health or disability. These factors will only increase over the medium term, which is one of the reasons why we can no longer afford a transport policy which deprioritises public transport, for which there is currently totally insufficient government funding. Our approach to transport must be genuinely inclusive, offering attractive public transport options and active travel infrastructure in both urban and rural areas, as well as reducing unnecessary travel by supporting homeworking and reviving our towns and villages. That's also the right thing to do for environmental reasons. Clean air, reduced carbon emissions. Electric cars may well be part of the solution, but bring their own problems with them, not least the dependency on rare minerals for their manufacture. And of course, they congest our streets as much as cars run on fossil fuels. This motion offers no solution to these issues or indeed to anything else. It's entirely negative and makes completely unwarranted and unevidenced assumptions. It has nothing to say and offers no vision for transport, either in the Greater Cambridge area or beyond.
Thank you. councillor Shayla.
Thank you, Chair. Around 100 people per year in Cambridge die premature deaths due to the effects of vehicle-derived air pollution. Another 30 or so are killed or seriously injured by being hit by cars. Traffic jams are the norm and the average speed continues to drop towards standstill. In a flash of lack of inspiration, this motion proposes a solution. Attempt to pile yet more traffic into the gridlock. That'll work. Maybe we should mobilise more buses into the same traffic jam for good measure. This thinking runs counter to the government's gear change and modal shift ambitions. Not to mention, especially at this time, weaning us off imported fuels and all of the climate change obligations that we have. We want to facilitate transport. And this will mean by other than by car. 37% of households in Cambridge do not own a car. It is 22% in Fenland. Add to this a large percentage of the working poor, who would be far better off if they didn't have to depend on a car. This is not the time to indulge in denial of reality or attempt business as usual. Business is crying out for change. The idea that more traffic jam and less space on the streets equates to more shoppers is simply not borne out by evidence. All things being equal, shopping areas with more car restrictions have a higher footfall. Less noise, less danger, less noxious fumes and more space. Imagine pouring traffic back through the centre of Cambridge. When I am out and about, I am constantly told that March was once the Vegas of the fens. And it seems that this was due to buses. As the buses were removed and people were forced to rely more on cars, this has gone away. The truth is, our towns and villages are choking on traffic and we need alternatives and we need them now. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. councillor Hay, please.
Thank you, Chair. I am pleased to support this motion put forward by councillor Sharp, as I was to support motion C put forward by councillor Goodron. In this motion, we are told the road pricing will affect those already suffering socio-economic inequalities. And that charging, if implemented, will have the effect of adversely penalising the low-paid workers who work on social hours and need their vehicles to be able to get to and from work. Road charging disproportionately targets the poorer elements of our society who are the least able to pay the charge. Quoting from motion C, it states that, where is it? The county council is making decisions of a strategic nature about how it exercises its function. It's due regard to the desirability in exercising those functions in a way that is designed to reduce the inequalities of outcomes which result from socio-economic disadvantage. And that adapt our equality impact assessment tools and processes to take account of this duty and the impact of decisions on those with protected characteristics, as well as the impact of those decisions on those who experience socio-economic disadvantage. I would therefore urge all members to seriously think about which way they vote on councillor Sharp's motion. As both mention motions, the interests of the residents which are most disadvantaged at heart. To vote against this motion after voting for motion C, to my mind, would be the worst kind of hypocrisy. So I would ask you all, please, look in your hearts and think which way you should vote.
councillor McDonald.
Thank you, Chair. And I should declare an interest as both Chair of
And I should declare an interest as both chair of highways, a substitute member of GCP. I'll be brief, Chair. When I first saw the publication of this motion, I thought it was extraordinary. And the reason for mechanisms. It's far too early in the process, I believe, with the GCP to be making claims about congestion charging. As you'll probably know, there was a certain politician in London who said in 2016 in discussion about a congestion charge, 'doing nothing is not an option', he said. And furthermore, he said, 'the new mayor of London will have to go further in encouraging cycling and getting people out of their cars to free up road space for essential business', and that politician was of course Boris Johnson. My own company has been extremely successful. They funded an excellent public transport system, also in a large university. I reiterate, this is far too early to this issue, subject to the outcome of consultation and therefore I can't support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Cox-Condon.
Thank you. Very obviously, we all share the concerns about the socio-economic impact of any sort of... And I was pleased to see this motion put forward as it illustrates perfectly how the socio-economic duty, which we have all just voted for, would be implemented to truly explore data impact and outcomes, to ensure that not only does any, that not only that any decision that we make does not impact negatively on our most vulnerable residents but that it has their wellbeing and our anti-poverty strategy at the very heart of it. I will not be voting for this motion, at best it is oversimplistic and at worst it could generate sandbites of misinformation that increase fear, stress levels and mistrust and further impacts on the wellbeing, health and ability to access services for the very residents that it is purporting to support.
Thank you. Councillor Tierney, please.
Thank you, Chair. And again, to respond to a few things people have said. Somebody said that businesses were crying out for change. I always enjoy these sort of statements because I wonder, have you spoken to all businesses? Certainly businesses I know aren't crying out for the sort of change that involves a congestion charge, but perhaps you're cherry-picking the businesses you speak to. Councillor Dupreeh gave us a long list of the expensive nature of driving for young people. Crocodile tears if ever I've heard them because then she proposes pricing them out of the market completely. Seems a cruel way to treat them, to be honest. It seems to me there are two schools of thought on this one. Some people are worried about the environment, others about congestion. I accept there's some crossover. For the environmental warriors, there's no price they won't pay, so you're going to pay hard luck and that, I'm afraid, is rotten. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Beckett, please.
Thank you, Chair. I want to start by saying how disappointed I am in this motion. It's a totally negative motion intended to constrain options, a motion to scare constituents, a motion to put on the back of a leaflet and use politically, a motion which makes no attempt to consider or explain what is actually a really complex set of options and decisions, a motion which brings no new ideas or solutions, only attempts to criticise and constrain. Let me give you some numbers. Thirty per cent, that's the amount, peak time traffic in Cambridge is set to grow by in the next 10 years. If you thought our roads were at standstill now, it's only going to get worse, much worse. Forty-five per cent, forty-five per cent of our climate emissions in Cambridge are caused by transport. Sixty-nine people are killed or injured on the roads of Cambridge every year. Sixty-two per cent are cyclists and 16 per cent pedestrians. One hundred and six deaths every year in Cambridge and South Cambridge can be attributed to poor air quality. Guess what the main source of emission in the city is? It's road traffic. Petrol prices have jumped by about 50% over the last 15 years and are currently at their highest ever. Like-for-like car prices have increased 30% in the last decade. The average cost of insuring a car for someone in their twenties is now almost £2,000 a year. The number of young people with driver's licences is now the lowest on record and the simple fact is that the poorest in society now cannot afford to own or run a car and are reliant on public transport or active travel. I'm hoping we can have cross-party support here when we say that numbers are untenable and that we need change. We cannot just continue, as we are today, with dysfunctional public transport infrastructure and with people forced into cars. Cambridgeshire demand a better bus service, a bus service that's fit for purpose and gives them options, a bus service which allows people to reduce down their reliance on a car and gets them where they want to go when they need to go there, a bus service which is cheap, reliable and which genuinely helps the poor. Forcing people into cars does not help the poorest. People have been really excited by the initial GCP proposals and Making Connections, but we still need to go further. We need all of Cambridgeshire to be connected and I'm proud as Liberal Democrats that we are leading the way, leading the way to genuinely help the poorest in society with their transport options, leading the way to give people genuine options to get out of their cars and not be disadvantaged in doing so. We saw at the Highways and Transport Committee last week just what a difference good active travel routes can make and I was happy to see so much cross-party support for these. Active travel is key to improving health and providing safe routes is key to that. There is so much which could be done here to positively impact the people of Cambridge but also the people of Cambridge Shire. I really wish members of the opposition could have worked with us here to bring a positive motion, a motion to help the people of Cambridgeshire instead of this negative one. In future, I hope we can work together on that. Finally, I want to finish with the comments of Hugh Merriam MP, Conservative Chair of the House of Commons Transport Committee. He says, and I quote, 'we need to talk about road pricing'. And his committee goes on to conclude that there are no viable alternatives to a road pricing system in the UK in the long term. As such, I think members of the opposition should listen to their Conservative central government here and not tie us to a policy in direct contravention of that, simply to score cheap political points.
Thank you. Councillor Gough, please.
Thank you, Chair. In relation to this matter, a number of options are currently being consulted upon by the Greater Cambridge Partnership through the Making Connections consultation. I'd like to remind members that that consultation proposes significant improvements to public transportation across the whole traffic to work, travel-to-work area and to look at ways to ensure that any improvements in that public transportation does not simply get clogged up on existing congested roads and that we also tackle related issues such as air quality. This motion presents absolutely no ideas as to how to resolve those fundamental issues. The public do understand these issues. These issues have been carefully considered by the Citizens Assembly and are now being followed up by the Making Connections consultation which was initiated by the GCP at the end of 2021. The results of that extensive consultation are now being processed. This council really should support evidence-based policymaking and I've personally been impressed that on this topic, that when presented with the real policy options, residents and businesses do recognise the issues and their importance and they have actively engaged in the consultation on that basis. We should surely listen to what they have to say before we leap to any conclusion. Given that, this motion seems to be a very odd attempt to preempt the democratic process for listening to public input and for that reason we should reject it. I do hope that councillor Sharp took the opportunity to contribute to the Making Connections consultation, although I must say many of the misconceptions in this motion suggest that he didn't. But many of the public, members of the public did and we should not disregard what our residents have to say and usurp that input with ill-founded assertions and misconceptions as implied by this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hoy, please.
Thank you. I agree with what councillor Tierney said about wondering if some people are so anti-car is because they actually are anti-people's freedom. I do think owning a car gives you a freedom that you perhaps don't know about if you haven't experienced. So I kind of want to talk about, I don't want to kind of bore you with the details of my life story, but I think it just helps to explain perhaps my position and to why I'm kind of so pro-car. When I moved to the Fens from Hertfordshire as a teenager, I was absolutely gobsmacked to the morality of the area. I mean, going from somewhere you can walk to the train in five minutes that takes you into central London to a little village is kind of a bit of a culture shock at the age of 14, but you know, that's where we are in a lot of places. And you're totally reliant on one bus every day and maybe getting a part-time job really hard and my family couldn't afford driving lessons. So you know, owning a car at that point was an option anyway. So I kind of found myself in a position 10 years ago where I was really at rock bottom, I suppose. I would be what most people would consider living in poverty at that time. I was left with low-skill jobs available to me. I did manage to get a job, which I really loved, really enjoyed it and I was offered a promotion, but I couldn't do it because I couldn't drive, I couldn't get around, the public transport was not suitable. So I did manage, kind of like beg, borrowing and stealing from grandparents to get some money to do driving lessons and managed to get a cheap car and got to go to Anglia Ruskin and finish my degree. So that really helped me and having that car was a massive amount of freedom because you can't get from West Beach to Cambridge. I mean, sure, many of you have tried public transport, it's not an easy situation to do twice a day to try and get into the city to kind of complete courses. And so having a car made something that was previously unachievable for me achievable. So if I'd have had to balance a) not having a car or having a car and having to pay extra money when I was already trying to live on a very extremely tight budget, I don't think I'd have managed to cope and I can't be alone. I'm not like the only person that would have experienced that. So I do just like people to think perhaps that, you know, it's not always the people on benefits that do struggle. There are a large amount of working people that really rely on that freedom having a car gives them. Now, of course, I know that we want buses and we want public transport and of course I'm not saying that we don't. I'd love us to have a train from West Beach to Cambridge, you know, I'd be on it tomorrow if we did. But what do we do in the meantime? While we're making that case for public transport, people have to be able to have something to use in the meantime. And just as another just small point, I was listening, I must admit, a year or so ago now, on Jeremy Vine, they had a discussion about the lower emission zone that was being brought in in Birmingham. And there was a lot of talk about kind of the knock-on effects that people hadn't thought of. So one of the knock-on effects that one of the small businesses was talking about is that they, deliveries obviously weren't exempt from this, so lorries and things were coming into the city and having to pay quite a high fee for coming in and making deliveries. And as a consequence, obviously they had to find a way to pay that and so they were passing it on on the price of the goods. And so there was two restaurant owners that were saying, you know, their margins are already so tight because of wage costs and Covid and all the other various things that this actually increase in their, in their raw goods costs because of the delivery cost had actually made their business unviable. So there are often knock-on effects that people don't think of and I would just ask you, when you do make this decision, that you do look at all of the problems that you could potentially be creating.
Thank you. Councillor Fuller.
Thank you, Chair. I was going to point out the irony, I think, of some of the comments we've heard from the joint administration in response to this motion, given what we discussed only a motion or two before. But having listened to councillor Hay, I would actually echo exactly what she said, that it's not irony, it's hypocrisy, hypocrisy in its worst form, in that the very same people that have told us today about how unequal Cambridge is as a city wish to cement that even further by supporting or, as the motion says, not supporting our resistance to these proposals that are emerging, that will unfairly impact the very people that will struggle the most to be able to afford it. And let's be very clear on that, that's the problem with motions such as, or proposals such as road pricing, in that it's a very regressive tax in effect, isn't it? Because those that can afford to continue to drive into Cambridge or around Cambridge and pay this, well, they'll carry on doing that. Those that can't face up to £15 a day, which I understand the figure's being mooted, which is, you know, over £3,000, nearly £4,000 a year potentially if you have to drive still after this is implemented, that's going to be significantly damaging to those people and their ability. And unfortunately, everything I've heard from the members of the joint administration in response to this so far, there are some relevant points that some colleagues are making there, but pretty much everything I've heard takes the usual Liberal Democrat, Labour approach of assuming that these are bad choices that people are making. By owning a car and choosing to drive, you are making a bad choice where you could be making a better choice. And unfortunately, that oversimplifies this immensely, Chair, because there are always going to be examples where people don't have the option to use public transport or active travel. Even if we had the best public transport system in the world, it is never going to be a catch or a coverall for every circumstance. And unfortunately, there are going to be lots of very vulnerable people that fall between the gaps with things like this. And that's why I find it so hypocritical, what we're being told here from colleagues around citizens assemblies and all the consultations going on in the city. I'm not aware that any of my residents in Huntingdonshire have been involved in this. In fact, I know for a fact that the GCP only went to speak to the district councils and afterthought, once the consultation had already begun. So let's look at the core of this motion. Remember, it's about everyone in Cambridgeshire. This is not a Cambridge city-only, focus on what Cambridge city should be consulted on. And I will finish, Chair, just pointing out, I think, my earlier comment around the difficulty some people will face with this and the assumption everyone can use active travel. You know, I have rural farms, for example, in the northern part of my division. Now, if a worker there needs to get into the city, for example, in unsociable hours or even in your own division, Chair, in some of your rural areas, say an elderly cancer patient needing to get to Adambrooks for their hospital, I'm sure people in those circumstances will be very reassured by councillor Dupreeh's comments that they can always get on their bike and use active travel measures.
Thank you. Councillor Bowden, please.
Thank you, Chair. I have, for a long time, been a strong proponent of public transport. I believe at its best it can be efficient and can be cost-effective. I believe currently it is a very, very long way from being at its best. Looking forward into the more distant future, within the combined authority, I'm very much on record as having said, that I don't believe that the... I would concur with councillors Hay and Fuller that what we are talking about here is gross hypocrisy. And as a result, what I would like to do is to give notice, Chair. I'd like a recorded vote on this matter when it comes to the vote. Thank you.
I'm going to move to councillor Count then and I'm going to move to councillor Maguire as second. So councillor Count. Councillor Machini. Councillor Count and councillor Machini, then councillor Maguire.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I must say that what I've heard so far from those opposing this motion is quite delusional and outdated. I struggled to keep my temper on occasion because I used to be in a different position and when I was in that position, I made it very clear to the GCP that they were barking up the wrong tree with a congestion charge. I spoke to Rachel Stubbard in my office and I said, 'no, the answer is no, stop'. And so this is what angers me. You see, we're told we shouldn't prejudge a consulted information in a post-Covid world that needs something different. The fact that Mayor Nick has landed and his vision only goes as far as let's have Stan and Ivy on the buses, being, nothing else being put forward, does not get us anywhere. We heard today talking about bad choices. Thirty-seven per cent of people in Cambridge don't own a car and 22% in Fennland. Well, 22% in Fennland don't and we have to do something with them, but I can tell you, the 70%, 8% that do probably need their cars and the new versions of public transport are not going to do it. And the reason, the reason why we have to stand up and be counted now is we are wasting time. We are wasting time and effort on moving forward with something that not only would not work when you bring it in, but also I think you'll struggle to vote because the decision is a county council decision. And it's all very well whipping some of actually winning a vote because people know the reality isn't there. There is no package of measures coming forward that will make this palatable or through the lens that we earlier held, the socio-economic lens, that it's actually the right thing to start removing the barriers and bringing down the differences in outcomes between us too early. The consultation is flawed. The consultation is flawed. It asks questions like, would you pay a charge? It doesn't ask a question like, would you pay a charge of up to £15 a day? And that's what's actually being promoted. It isn't clear that the residents of Cambridge City really are going to have to pay this alongside everybody else because over 50% of the car journeys are by... You know, always gets hidden behind, somehow it's somebody else's fault. The consultation isn't ready, we aren't ready. The officer put forward the report, not us. Let me describe the life view when you don't live in Cambridge City or close enough to cycling. What you will be putting forward is the fact that somebody has to give up paying £70 a week as a choice of £70 a week, £5 a week for access, perhaps because there is a bus that can take them in, that goes to a village three miles away from where they live. Or some may be able to catch a train that operates every other hour. Those close enough to the city can get on their push bike on a bike path and you've got to keep on doing that in the depths of winter when it's snowing. Let's be realistic. Let's think of your residents and think which will be preferred because the government is talking about it. That's to do... That's to do with the lack of the change in the vehicle licence exercise duty. There was a lot of misinformation today. Stand up and be counted and don't let this Cambridge-centric do something like the guided busway that has millions of peoples a year on it and actually bring forward something that makes a positive change, not just penalise motorists because it's easy.
Thank you, councillor Maschini. Then I'm going to move to councillor Maguire.
Thank you, Chair. So, I'm sorry, I was, I got there in the end, I raised my hand in time. So damned if you do and damned if you don't. This is a concept that becomes very familiar to people as they become local councillors, but we put up with it, we put up with the occasional frustrations in the job because we are all committed to increasing the public good. This is a vocation and it's a concept to which if I have time, I might return. Damned this time for asking a question. So congestion in Greater Cambridge, which specifically means congestions on the roads leading to Cambridge City and congestions within the city, is a very old problem and it has dogged us for many, many decades. And questions on how to solve it has been asked before and proposals have been put forward and not progressed and that's a sign that consultations are worth engaging with rather than undermining regardless of which outcome you support. And I have people in mind here, but I won't name them. Since, of course, the last time the question was asked, a number of things have changed. So number one, of course, the climate emergency, which has been declared throughout the country and by local authorities within Greater Cambridge, and the growth in Greater Cambridge, which is continuing at a pace. We have got twenty-five thousand jobs planned in the biomedical campus site alone. And the government has introduced a bosspectors, ha, sorry, they think it's catchy, but I can't say it, a boss-back-better strategy, which comes with no money, no plans and in Greater Cambridge, actual cuts to infrastructure. And Mr Gov and Mr Shaps, if you're listening, where is the funds for East West Rail? Now, it has been mentioned that the pandemic has put a temporary reset to congestion as people with a certain type of job were able to take themselves off the roads. But essential and frontline work has never had that luxury and now the government is telling us the pandemic is over and therefore traffic is back, as has been seen by us getting here today. So when councillor Count repeats the argument, I can only assume he flew here today. Greater Cambridge infrastructure is positively medieval, utterly inadequate for sustaining the growth that we're experiencing and where are the positive proposals in this motion to solve that problem? I will take that instead of anything else if I could just be presented with it. Government is hiking tax, fuel taxes up, fuel prices are up and running a car is not going to be as cheap as it's been so far. And that's even before we had any idea that there would be war in Ukraine. The arguments I am making are not for any particular scheme in Greater Cambridge because no such scheme is on the table as of yet and we can't debate it because it's not been presented. But there are arguments for asking the question, which is what we are doing. And I said I would come back to the concept of vocation because we're all here for a limited time and we all want to make a difference, we all want to have a legacy and our legacy collectively in Cambridgeshire has to be sustainable infrastructure. And finally, this motion calls for the member representative on the GCP and CPCA to take into account the views of the council. Now councillor Sharp, I hope you will be relieved to hear that this is in fact my job and it will be my job going forward. We have strategic priorities in this council and they get brought to the GCP so that they may help us formulate plans to align with our strategy. And I very much hope that the misinformation will end at this point, although I am not holding my breath and thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. So now we move to councillor Maguire, a second of the motion.
Thank you, Chairman. In his start contribution to the debate, councillor McDonald said that as he was chairman of Highways and Transport, he ought to declare an interest. As the spokesman on this side of the hall, I will also declare an interest, but my interest is because I've been here on this particular debate before. Some of you may remember that we did consider, or there was proposals for congestion charging a few years ago, I think it might have been in the early part of this century as opposed to the late nineteen nineties, and it did not enjoy support then from businesses, local people, whatever, and I don't think it'll enjoy it now. Couple of points I do want to pick up though is that, you know, and I would appeal to councillor Beckett when he associates active travel and the support that it generally enjoys across the committee from all sides and don't, not to confuse that with the introduction of any sort of road charging, council charging, congestion charging or workplace charging, they're different and I think he's reducing the value of active travel by doing so. Councillor McDonald also referred to the fact that Nottingham introduced a successful workplace charging. I think that's debatable if you talk to people in Nottingham, some of the businesses are not happy about it and it's quite interesting because if you do your research across the different introductions of measures taken in many of the other cities across the country, you'll find that Nottingham is the only one who has taken the trouble, even considered introducing a workplace charge. So I don't think it enjoys that much popularity as he is, he seems to infer. Congestion charges, we've already heard, and workplace charging are regressive taxes and they will disproportionately affect those on the lower incomes and on smaller businesses if they start introducing workplace charging. Another point I want to make though is, it's interesting, I won't repeat partly because I'm cold chairman and I find it difficult to even write notes here, maybe this has to do with how long I have been around, but I feel very cold, so I hope to also take that on board when we consider the venue again. Councillor Sanderson said in the earlier debate on equalities that he didn't see that particular issue as being a competition across the county. Well, I hope he will recognise that congestion charging will be a competition across this county because it will more adversely affect the surrounding districts. And I would suggest that anybody who represents constituency within those districts seriously considers that they actually vote on this motion with their conscience and not with their personal ambitions. Because, Chairman, this is going to affect those who have to travel into and out of Cambridge more than it'll affect those who probably live in Cambridge. So, Chairman, I hope that members will support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sharp, to sum up.
Thank you, Chair. I just want a few points that have been mentioned, but I'll try not to. Picking up councillor Shayler's point about people dying of vehicle, you know, exhaust fumes or whatever, totally accept that. But I don't think there's an easy answer to that and I'm going to give you a brief story. Last Friday, I was in London in Rotherhithe, Bermondsey for the funeral of my uncle, he was the last one of nine brothers, he was one of my dad's brothers, Horium. We'd gone, I'd gone down by train, we thought it'd be easy, I would get a cab, my sister was there, we got a cab. It took us about thirty minutes in London. Fortunately, we caught the hearse up, so we realised we wouldn't be late for the cremation. So London is not the panacea with its GCP seminars that I attended. I was told by officers that there was a forty million pound annual revenue cost of implementing the buses that the mayor wants to implement, but no, they've got no coherent way of raising that money. Councillor Maschini talks about no infrastructure, yet Cambridge and South Cambridgeshire District councils are proposing to put forty-seven thousand houses in the next few years. I'm not sure where the infrastructure for that is going to come from. So those sort of things need to be thought of. I've not brought this to make councillor Hoff, I think it was, apologies for the mispronunciation. I'm not making cheap political points. I'm just, my residents have got grave concerns about some of these proposals and they hear a lot of talking and not much action. I do want an inclusive and proper debater of Greater Cambridge traffic. Since becoming a county councillor, I've become frustrated at the lack of a voice that the last large part of this county has on the issue. Certainly in my ward, which is the ward that butts on, parts of butts on to Cambridge, I've got lots of residents who feel that they've got no say, but whatever is decided is going to impact on them. So that's where I'm coming on, coming from. I would love to have more debate around this issue and I would just ask you to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Bowden has requested a recorded vote. Councillor Bowden, do you have thirteen friends to join in that request? Okay, so if I can ask Democratic Services Manager to conduct a recorded vote, please.
Thank you, Chair. Councilors, I'll just call out your name and then if you could reply either for, against or abstain. Ambrose Smith.
For.
Atkins.
Against.
Bachelor.
Against.
Beckett.
Against.
Bradnam.
Against.
Boulatt.
Against.
Connor.
For.
Corny. Costello.
For.
Count.
Coates.
Against.
Coxcondren.
Against.
Doughton.
Against.
Dew. Dew. Gom. Okay. Dupre.
Against.
Ferguson.
Against.
French.
For.
Fuller.
For.
Gardner.
For.
Gay.
Against.
Goldsack.
For.
Goodliffe.
Against.
Goff.
Against.
Gowing. Hathorn.
Against.
Hay. Howe.
For.
Howitt.
Against.
Hoy.
For.
Kindersley.
Against.
Maria King.
Against.
Simon King.
For.
McDonald.
Against.
Maguire. Misskinny.
Against.
Mill. Chair, the result of the vote is, I do my maths, twenty-one votes in favour and thirty-two votes against, no abstentions. The motion is therefore lost.
Thank you. That concludes discussions of motions. I'm aware that we're past the time when we should take another break, but with one item left on the agenda, I think members would probably prefer to push on unless I see any dissent. Thank you. So agenda item number ten is, ten A is, we consider, which is Cambridgeshire and Peterborough Combined Authority in Overview Scrutiny Committee Oral Questions, which will be dealt with in accordance with the protocol set out in Annex One of Part Four Point One of the Council Procedure Rules of the Council's Constitution. The generic report summarising decisions made by the Combined Authority's formal committees is included in the council's agenda on pages fifty-four to seventy-four. Can you please raise your hand if you wish to ask a question of councillor Nessinger, the council's appointee on the board? Thank you. Can you please raise your hand if you wish to ask a question of councillors Atkins and Goldsack, the council's appointees on the Overview and Scrutiny Committee? The second part of this item is questions on fire authority issues, so we're going to take questions on that now. This will be dealt with in accordance with the guidelines agreed by the council. The report from the Fire Authority is included on the council agenda on pages seventy-five to seventy-eight. Councillor Edna Mair, Fire Authority, will respond to questions on behalf of the Fire Authority. Other members of the Fire Authority are welcome to come in if they wish. Do we have any questions? Thank you for staff for all your support and thank you just members of the public who's-